Sir.
Your Wi-Fi may not work, Steve. Is it on?
Yeah, could I get my...
Yeah, I can do it. Is it working, your Wi-Fi?
I don't know.
Ooh, that is wrong.
Let's see.
It's the air talk, air toys? And I put one in.
Before I came in.
Nope. And it's going to my glasses. It is.
Ah, get it, I got you.
But he's here, we'll just start. Hammond City Council, public hearing agenda, November 23rd, 2020, roll call please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing number one, an ordinance for an expanded conditional use request by LaRonda Varneado to allow placement of a manufactured home to be placed on proposed Lot 1 of the Ethel Varneado Estate at 202 South Scanlon Street in accordance with survey by George D. Sullivan. Zoning Commission recommends approval with the conditions set forth in the agenda. Tracy.
Thank you, Councilor. So Ms. LaRonda is asking for placement of a mobile home for herself and her property on Scanlon Street. She's provided a revised survey that you guys should be having in your package. And we're asking for the normal conditions for these used, if the mobile home is just for her use, if the owner changes, she has to change her permission here, Council, and the mobile home must meet the by standards.
Is anyone here on this matter?
Yes.
Do you want to address the council?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there any council questions? This is in Councilman Wells' district, correct?
Correct.
Anyone else here to, that wants to address us? Any public comment on YouTube?
No, ma'am.
I'll close public comment. Number two, an ordinance to accept a dedication of servitude for all public utilities and infrastructure on South Scanlon Street in accordance with survey by George D. Sullivan. Planning Commission recommends acceptance. Tracy.
This is also Ms. LaRonda's property. Her property actually crosses the pavement, the actual street that's there. It's been like that for many, many years. And with her subdividing, this came to light. So we're asking for you guys to accept this area as a servitude where Scanlon Street crosses her property, so we can maintain the street and any utilities that are in that servitude.
Anyone here on this?
Yes.
Do you want to address the council?
No, sir.
Okay. Any council comments or questions? Anyone else here on this? Any YouTube comments?
No.
I'll close public comment. Number three, an ordinance to annex City of Hammond property being a parcel, being 56.15 acres, located south of the Hammond Airport and Highway 190 East and east of W-3, West Seltzer's Canal, to be zoned S2. And in City Council District Number One, Zoning Commission recommends approval. Tracy.
This is 56 acres. It's been recently cleared near the airport. It's adjacent to the Piggly Wiggly. We're asking that you guys annex this property in and have it zoned with the airport S2 District and place it in Kip's Council District. This area was cleared for safety reasons for the airport, and the property's been owned by the city many, many years. It just never was annexed into the city limits.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments by the council? Anyone here on YouTube?
No, ma'am.
The only other thing I want to add is there is a legal description attached in your packet. If you could please use that when you use it for your ordinance.
I'll see that. You want that in the ordinance?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, I will close public comment. Number four, an ordinance request by Rose Guesthouse LLC owner and Adrian Ishman applicant to allow placement of a manufactured home located on Lot 13 Square 2 of the Greenville Park Edition located at 206 East Green Street with the conditions set forth in the agenda. Tracy.
So this is also a request to place a mobile home for Ms. Ishman. And it's got the standard conditions we ask. It's for her use, and the mobile home must meet the current standards. This is in Councilman Wells' district.
Anyone here on this matter? Questions or comments by the council? Anyone on YouTube? Okay. I'll close public comment.
Thank you.
We'll move into our regular session. Roll call please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
I'll ask you to stand for our prayer, followed by our pledge, and let's ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer tonight.
Most gracious, lovely, turn of heaven and father, we just thank you right now. We give you glory and honor and praise that it do your name, Father God. Thanking you for your darling son who died upon the promise that we too would have access to the real life. I thank you, Father God, tonight, that everything will be done decent and in order and pleasing in your sight. I thank you, Father God, that we continue to move throughout this week, the week that has been set aside and designed for us to give thanks, that we put it back in our heart and our mind, that every day is a day of Thanksgiving. And we should thank you for everything that you have done and everything that you're about to do to keep us and guide us from all hurt, harm, and danger. I just continue to bless our council, continue to bless their families, continue to give us wisdom, peace, knowledge, promote high. Continue to bless our city administration, continue to give them wisdom, peace, and knowledge. But not only that, to him, the Father, I just continue to bless our men and women in protecting service from the fire department to the police department, continue to cover them, continue to guide them and keep them. If there's ever a time we need you, Father God, we need you right now. So we just thank you right now, through all that we've been through throughout this year thus far, that you've kept us and you're going to continue to keep us. And we just thank you for it all right now, in your darling son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And for our pledge, I'll ask all veterans and active military to run the crowd salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I ask for council reports. Councilman Andrews.
I'd like to make a presentation. Anyone from the Moore family would like to come up and receive it? Excuse me, ma'am. I put it on my last anniversary, I'm all good. A certificate of outstanding leadership in memory of George Marie Moore, was an active member, church member, church mother of Bibleway, Bibleway ministry, church guardian of Christ, the daughter of Mr. M.C. Moore, who filed a discrimination lawsuit against the Tangoo Parish Food System over 55 years ago, which is still ongoing. She continued the legacy. She was one of the founders of the M.C. Moore Foundation, giving scholarship for higher education. We are thankful for George Marie Moore's vision and impact on her family, church, and community. We greatly appreciate her love for her church and community. She will always be in our memory for her dedication. Signed this day, November 20th, 2020, Chip Andrews, Hammond City Council District.
No more than to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and continue to practice your social distance. And I know this would be a very unusual Thanksgiving that we're not used to, but you can still face time, your family still call them or whatever, but stay safe.
Now, I just echo Kip, you know, I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving and enjoys a safe time with their families.
I wanted to tell the city that the Christmas lights look good. You guys are doing it in stages, which is nice. And normally, I don't approve of Christmas lights before Thanksgiving, but we could all use a little cheer this year. So that looks great. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Mayor?
I just want to congratulate Kip on receiving a Citizen of the Year Award. And if you would, to correct me if I'm wrong, from Chi Kappa Kappa Chapter Omega PSI fraternity? Is that correct? So congratulations to you for that award.
Thank you.
Well deserved. And as everyone has said, please have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your families. And I'm sure everybody will be doing the right things, but enjoy for sure.
Good. Thank you. All right, now for our minutes of November 10th, 2020, need a motion, please?
Make a motion that we accept and approve our November 10th, 2020 meeting, minutes.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Now for our minutes of November 17th, 2020, motion please?
Make a motion that we accept and approve November 17th, 2020 minutes from our meeting.
Second.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Old business none, new business one, a resolution accepting a $47,580 grant from the Lake Pontchartrain Basin Restoration Program to install emergency generators at lift station six and 51. Two, approving a $20,391 cash match from the Water and Sewer Department. And three, authorizing the mayor or his designated complete and signed related documents. Charles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a grant that we apply for semi-annually. Since I've been here, we've used it to upgrade our lift stations with emergency power generators. So if there is a hurricane or other type of event that causes a loss of power, our sewer system will continue to function. I believe that lift station number six is in Councilman Leon's district, and lift station number 51 is in Councilman Wells' district. The match for this would come from the Grant Match Fund.
Is that different?
I'm sorry, it would come from the Water and Sewer Department. I misspoke.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments by the council? Anyone here on this matter? All right, anyone from YouTube?
No, ma'am.
I'll close public comment. Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. Final adoption of ordinance, number one, final adoption of an ordinance for an expanded conditional use request by LaRonda Varneado to allow placement of a manufactured home to be placed on proposed Lot 1 of the Ethel Varneado Estate at 202 South Scanlon Street. In accordance with survey by George D. Sullivan, zoning commission recommends approval with the conditions set forth. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, final adoption of ordinance to accept a dedication of servitude for all public utilities and infrastructure on South Scanlon Street in accordance with survey by George D. Sullivan. Planning Commission recommends acceptance. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, final adoption of ordinance to annex City of Hammond property being a parcel, being 56.15 acres, located south of the Hammond Airport and Highway 190 East and east of W-2, to be zoned S2. And in City Council District Number One, Zoning Commission recommends approval. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, final adoption of an ordinance request by Rose Guesthouse LLC and Adrian Ishman to allow placement of a manufactured home located on Lot 13 Square 2 of the Greenville Park Edition located at 206 East Green Street with the conditions set forth in the agenda. Recommended approval, yes. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion approved.
Second.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Introduction of an ordinance, number one, introduction of an ordinance to rezone 41.75 acres requested by Round Table Investments LLC from RS8 to IL in accordance with survey by William J. Bowden Jr., located at 2100 Industrial Park Road. Zoning Commission approved with conditions. Do you think I need to read these then?
You can refer, you can refer to the agenda. If anyone's not seen that, they're all listed on the agenda for today's meeting. It was posted on the...
Right. Okay. Tracy.
Hey, so this property is asking to rezone from R8 to IL, Light Industrial. The property's located on the corner of Industrial Road and Vineyard Road. It's 41.75 acres. You have a copy of the survey attached in your packet. This property was annexed into the city limits August 19th in 1998. At that time, we had an ordinance, in 1960, that the city adopted this ordinance, annexing property. If you didn't designate the zoning, it automatically went to this zoning. So this property's been zoned that since the annexation. There's several large live oak trees on this site, and the Industrial Park Road itself and some of the infrastructure there, the water and that was put on that industrial park was done with a grant from the Urban Development Action Grant in 1984. That was a result of some jobs from the Dell Champ's warehouse being constructed and the Eckers warehouse at that time. The zoning commission held their public hearing on November 16th, and they recommended approval with the conditions you have attached on the site, on the staff report. Based on their recommendation of approval, the conditions, they recommended approval based on the master plan, the FAA discouraging residential use near the airport, the master planning consultants Dover Coal and their recommendation not to build residential near the airport, and to encourage industrial economic development adjacent to the airport and based on smart growth principles. So the zoning commission recommended approval with those conditions, and we're asking to set the public hearing for December 8th.
Questions from the council? Just for those that are here and want to speak on this, this is an introduction to, this is a vote to introduce for December 8th. It's not a vote to actually rezone. I think most people probably know that by now. But it is on our agenda, so we will allow public comment if you feel the need to give us your feedback. Of course, if this is voted to be introduced, there would be more public hearing on December 8th. So I'll open it up for anyone that wants to speak on this. And I'm sorry, I'm going to do a time limit.
That's fine. I'll try to make it brief, so I can all get out of here. So Buck Rignack at 25 Pine Court, representing Okinawa Estates. We are pretty much a neighborhood and adjoining property. I want to introduce the petition pretty much with the signatures there. I know we had introduced these before, but I just wanted to make sure that was there, pretty much so on record. I know there's a lot of opposition, or, I'm sorry, a lot of people who think this is a great idea. Not everyone in our neighborhood pretty much signed this petition, okay? There was a handful of people who didn't want to because, one, they did business with the city, so they were worried about retribution, or, you know, just that kind of fear factor that really everybody's been having. And even though we hear a lot of support, pretty much from the Hammond Chamber of Commerce and offshore builders, from their boards, there's a number of those people that belong to those organizations that signed this and said, you know what, this is not a good idea. Okay? It's kind of hard that we came up with a master plan back in 2011 that mysteriously just said, hey, everybody who lives over there now, we don't want to build any more residences out there, and that all should be industrial, whatever. It's kind of one of those things that, you know, doesn't sit right with everybody out there that's invested, invested all their property, their kids' property, and it's wonderful neighborhoods out there. And we feel that just that the idea of a building, whatever, being built of that magnitude, that that size building would actually take up the whole area of our 41 acres in our neighborhood. So just to sort of the magnitude, we've got 90 houses there. Now, all of a sudden, this is like putting 90 houses in that one area. So just feel that it's just really not appropriate. You can interpret the master plan a lot of different ways. Okay, now I'll go into that a lot more, you know, in the next meeting. But I really think that, you know, you should consider reading which your requirements are, which your criteria is, that you should be looking at to try to represent the citizens that live out there. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wants to speak on this?
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all.
Sorry, name and address for the record, please.
Andrea L. Jackson, 18127 Leaf Farm Road. And I'm pretty close to that area. Let me just say this, that I am here as the Vice President of the Florida Parish Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance. And of course, we do believe that this is the best thing for this community. First of all, when we talk about 450 jobs, we're talking about jobs that are $32,000 and up. We have to understand this. We understand that everyone does not have the means that others do. I can tell you right now that I'm not worried about where my children are going to school, where my grandson is going to school, but there are some people who do. Also, I'm not worried about my next meal. I am saying to you that there are people, that there are people who need these jobs. There was a time that we had Dell Champ. I, I, listen, I'm a lifelong member of this, of this community. I remember when there was Dell Champ, when there was Eckers, those warehouses. This is an industrial area. This is an industrial area. And, 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 and the next, on December 8th, I plan on coming back again, and I plan on coming back with names of all those that we believe that it's going to support Medline. Because we believe that this is something good for this community. First of all, when you talk about generational wealth, we're talking about a living wage. We're talking about a living wage here. We're talking about 401K. We're talking about insurance. We're talking about what we need as, as a community, as a community. And, and I can tell this council, when, when we come back on December 8th, we're coming. We are coming. Because we believe that this is the best thing for this community. I understand that there's always going to be opposition. There's always opposition to everything. You know, when I went in the Army in 1969, there was opposition to the military. And coming back here, there was opposition. But now is rah rah rah. Everything is great now. But I, I ask this council to stop and take a look at this. If, if your son needed a job, if your cousin needed a job, if your neighbor needed a job, and I can say this as I close, we are no better than those that we take care of, the least of them. That's what I'm going to say to you. And remember, that this is not just about us. This is about God looking down. And He expects us to do what's right in His sight and to do what's in the best interest of all the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michael Showers, 17536 Rising Farm Road, Louisiana, President of the Greater Tansbow Parish and double ACP. So as cities, towns, across the state, across the, across the nation, is wrestling with shutting businesses down, losing jobs, having an economic impact, Hammond has the opportunity to do the opposite. Grow businesses, have a better economic impact, increase budgets, all the things that we always asked for. And we're asking you all, this is going to help a lot of families. It's not just the political side, and we understand that. But it's also the human side, something that'll help a lot of families here in this particular area. We implore each of you, as you all have made your campaign two years ago, platforms to increase jobs and to do other things in the city. This will do that. This would do exactly what you all have campaigned to do. So we implore each of you council members to vote as a sounding yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone from YouTube?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I know that there's been a lot of working, a lot of input given in the planning and zoning, and then throughout the process here. What we have on our agenda is directly from planning and zoning. And then we, our city attorney, Andre Cudrin, has put together an alternate ordinance that incorporates some of the additional requirements and restrictions. They're basically, people have called them deed restrictions, for this rezoning. And so that is hyperlinked on, on the agenda. And it's been sent to all council. Do you have any questions about that? Anybody want to address that, Andre?
We also have copies here.
You have copies here too? Okay.
Yes. I, I wanted to point out that there's been lots of discussion, lots of talk at several public meetings about things that folks have been concerned about, and frankly, things that Medline has discussed and has agreed to. Those things were not included in the planning and zoning's recommendation. So I wanted to be sure the council had available to it, those things and other things that were brought to the attention that maybe the council should consider. Specifically, there's a couple of points. One is the notion of sterilization activities at this site was specifically addressed as a concern. And so what is proposed to the council as an alternate ordinance specifically prohibits not just manufacturing, but sterilization activities on the property. The other thing that was discussed was a $500,000 grant that was given to Medline from the state, and Medline turning that over, that $500,000 to the city, to be used for infrastructure improvements in that area. The next is a contribution by Medline of $200,000 that would be used for drainage improvements in the area to help mitigate some negative effects for drainage in the area. That's included in the alternate ordinance. There's a discussion and agreement for Medline to contribute funds to construct a bike path on the west side of Industrial Park. That's included in the alternate ordinance. There was a concern about compliance with the FAA, other provisions of the UDC, is specifically addressed in this alternate ordinance, that this project must, must also comply with all FAA requirements, other UDC requirements, other city ordinances, any other approvals from public agencies. There was discussion about the Tangoo Parish Government conducting a traffic study in connection with this. That's included as a condition of, of the ordinance, that the Parish Government would conduct a traffic study. There's also a point raised that the city should enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Tangoo Parish Government. That the Tangoo Parish Government, their building office, their department assist the city in the review, evaluation, enforcement, and other issues regarding permitting, enforcing, and compliance with zoning, building, restricted conditional use requirements, that that a cooperative endeavor agreement be required with the Parish as part of this. Also, that the city enter into a written agreement with the property owner that details out any specifics regarding any of the conditions that the council may impose. So it's all of those things that are rolled up into the alternate ordinance. It includes the recommendations from planning and zoning, but also adds to that those things that I've just reviewed for you today. And all that's included in what's been called the alternate ordinance. This would be for introduction only. Certainly, all of those can be discussed. Certainly, all of those can be discussed at a public hearing the council can add to, can delete from, those conditions, or not approve. All that will be on the table for review and discussion at the next meeting.
Any other comments or questions by the council? As I appreciated, it's probably better to have as much public discussion as possible. And being that all of the things that have been talked about are set forth in this alternate ordinance, you know, obviously, our vote can include all or some or none of those things, whatever, how it goes on December 8th. I'll make a motion that we introduce the alternate ordinance as set forth in our hyperlinked agenda.
I'll second that.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
No.
Motion approved to introduce. Public hearing is set for December 8, 2020, at 5:30 PM.
Number two, introduction and ordinance to annex three parcels owned by City of Hammond being 11.311 acres and 13.663 acres, 17.55 acres located at the northeast and south intersection of Industrial Park Road and Highway 190 East, to be zoned S-2 and placed in City Council District Number One. Zoning commission recommends approval. Tracy?
So this property is at the corner of the airport and Industrial Park. It's on the north side of the street and on the south side of the street. This is, some of that property was recently purchased by the city. It's never annexed into, so we're asking you to zone it as S-2 with the airport property. It's also in Kip's district. And there's also a legal description that encompasses all those properties, so you can use that for your ordinance. The registrar voters and the tax assessor has given us certification on this property that no one lives there, there's no voters in that area. So we're asking you to introduce this for adoption on December 8th.
Any questions or comments from the council on this?
And Tracy, you say this would be part of the airport?
It would be zoned as part of the airport, S-2.
It's like the case next to the.
Yeah. It's down here. Yeah. Anyone here on this matter? Anyone from YouTube?
No, ma'am.
Close public comment. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for December 8, 2020, at 5:30 PM.
Number three, introduction and ordinance to expand, for expanded conditional use requested by Bessie Hunter and Shanta Mack to allow placement of a manufactured home meeting all code requirements located at 504 East Michigan Street, zoned RM2. Zoning commission recommends approval with the conditions set forth in the agenda. Tracy?
So this is also a mobile home, asking for the standard conditions. The zoning commission or the Board of Adjustments gave her a variance to waive the front door facing requirements on the mobile home. Because the lot is narrow and deep, you can't possibly put the mobile home with the front door facing the street. So they've waived that, and we're asking for you guys to set this for public hearing on December 8th.
Any questions by the council? Anyone here on this matter? Anyone from YouTube?
No.
All right, close public comment. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for December 8, 2020.
Number four, introduction and ordinance for expanded conditional use requested by Roslyn Pines and Constance Pines to allow placement of manufactured home meeting all requirements on proposed Lot C located at 810 C Natchez Street, zoned RS-3. Commission approved with the conditions set forth in the agenda. Tracy?
So this has an additional condition for mobile home. We asked her to provide a survey. She didn't want to do that until she got approval because of the cost of a survey, but she did have Mr. Bowden sketch out what's proposed on her survey. So our board looked at that and reviewed it and agreed to make that just as a condition. There's four, three mobile homes currently on the lot, so she had to create another lot to place a new mobile home. So we're asking this to be set for a public hearing on December 8th.
Good. Any questions or comment by the council? Anyone here on this matter? YouTube?
No.
I'll close public comment. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for December 8th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.